Of emergency, this is the Plenary Hall exit plan. For guests situated at the rostrum, the nearest exits are at the north and south rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP gallery, the north, south, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides. In case of emergency, this is the Plenary Hall exit plan. For guests situated at the rostrum, the nearest exits are at the north and south rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP gallery, the north, south, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides.
The session is called order. May I remind everybody to please stand for singing of our national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alam ng puso sa tipit moy buhay. Lupang hiniram, duya ka ng magiliw. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa lakitong pagkao. May hilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nilawahan. Ang isap ng wataw at mo'y na kumpay narapikin. Ang pituwing at paraw niya kailan pa may magidiling. Luban ang maraw ng warangit pa'ng sikta. Uyay labil sa tiko. Aming likaya dapat may mahapin at lamatay ng daril sayo.
Please remain standing for a minute of prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move for the temporary suspension of our session.
Say suspend it.
Kesa la pano? La pano? Oo, may naba. Sanay? Kupasa? Eh, may malabo tumo.
Iya po, iya po. It's Instagram.
Oo, mahal din ako.
Yes, sir. Ako balos ng journal first, hindi wala. Ako balos ng journal.
Asana siya.
Well, para.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members. Honorable representatives. Abalos. Abante. Abunda. Atcharon. Asidre. Ako. Adyong. Advincula. Agaraw. Alba. Albano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Jose. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Ang. Angara. Aquino. Aquino Magsaisay. Arbison. Arenas. Arrogansha. Asistio. Ataidi. Omentado. Balindong. Barba. Barbers. Baronda. Barzaga. Bascug. Bautista. Bautistalin. Benitez. Bernos. Bilyones. Biron. Bolilia. Bondok. Bongalon. Bordado. Bosita. Breones. Brosas. Buahin. Bulut Begtang. Bustos. Cabredo. Cagas. Kahayonui. Calderon. Calixto. Campos. Kawagdan. Cardema. Carey. Castro Franz. Castro Jean. Celeste. Chan. Chato. Tua. Tunggalau. Co Angelica Natasha. Co Elizalde. Co Pilar. Co Juanco Jaime. Co Juanco Marc. Colada. Coliantes. Porvera. Cruz Ambrosio. Cruz Ricardo. Kuwa. Juarezma. Dago'o. Dalipe. Dalo. Dayanghirang. Daza. De Jesus. De Venesia. Defensor. Delmar. De Los Santos. Dimoporo Mohamed Khalid. Dimoporo Siti Amina. Dionisio. Domingo. Duavit. Duhalii. Duterte. Di Faustino Ino. Di Faustino Michael Carlos. Di Ian Paul. Ecleyo. Emano. Enverga. Escudero. Espares. Espina. Estrella. Yudella. Farinas. Fernandez. Ferrer Antonio. Ferrer Juliet Marie. Flores. Cortez. Frasco. Fresnedi. Puente Belia. Galleos. Garcia Albert. Garcia Dante. Garcia Jose Arturo. Garcia Maria Angela. Garcia Pablo Gian. Garcia Vincent. Gardiola. Garin. Gasataya. Gato. Go Ed Christopher. Go Marc. Goles. Gomez. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Aurelio. Gonzalez Neptali. Gonzalez Sandro. Goriseta. Guico. Ginto. Gulyas. Gutierrez. Hagidorn. Jaresco. Hataman. Hernandez. Herrera. Horibata. Javier. Co Olga Ara. Co Ricardo. Co Wilton. Conghun. Labad Labad. Laxon. Laxon Uel. Lagman. Lagon Daphne. Lagon Sani. Lara. Lazatin. Lee. Legarda. Libanan. Limcaychong. Loyola. Luistro. Lumayag. Makapagal Arroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Magsino. Malapitan. Mangawang. Maniquis. Manuel. Maranyon. Marco Leta. Marcos. Mariano Hernandez. Marinio. Marquez. Martinez. Mastura. Matibag. Matugas. Mendoza. Mercado. Mercado Revilla. Miguel. Momo. Morden. Nava. Misai. Noel. Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe. Nograles Margarita. Nolasco. Uwaminal. Olaso. Olivares. Ongchuan. Ordanes. Ortega. Uwano Dizon. Padearnos. Paduano. Paglas. Palma. Panaligan. Pancho. Panotes. Pascual. Penya. Pimentel. Plaza. Plato. Primicia Sagabas. Umarin. Puno. Kimbo. Rama. Recto. Rehencia. Remulia. Revilla Brian. Revilla Ramondjolo. Reyes. Rilio. Rivera. Robes. Rodriguez Ilohyo. Rodriguez Rufus. Roman. Romero. Romualdes Ferdinand Martin. Romualdes Yedamarie. Romualdo. Romulo. Roque. Sacdalan. Sagarbaria. Sakaluran. Salceda. Sally. Salimbangon. Salo. Salvame. Santos. Saulug. Silverio. Singson Richel. Singson Ronald. Singson Mihan. Solon. Suwan. Swansing Horacio. Swansing Mikaela Angela. Suarez. Taliado. Tamayo. Tambunting. Tan Joseph. Tan Keith Maika. Tan Reynolds Michael. Tan Samir. Tan Stephen James. Tan Tambut. Tan Chai. Tan Huatco. Tariela. Teodoro. Teves Arnolfo. Teves Jose. Tiangco. Tieng. Tolentino. Tulfo Irwin. Tulfo Joseline. Tulfo Ralph Wendell. Tupas. Tutor. Ti. Umalii. Unabia. Ungab. Valeriano. Valmayor. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Velasco. Velozo Tuazon. Vergara. Versosa. Villia. Villia Forte Luis Raymond. Villia Forte Miguel Luis. Villia Nueva. Villiar. Villiaraza Suarez. Villiarica. Violago. Yamsuan. Yap Chrishantel. Yap Christopherson. Yap Advic. Yap Eric. Yu Divina Grace. Yu Jaisal Victoria. Yulo. Zamora Amparo Maria. Zamora Maria Carmen. Zamora Isabel Maria. Zubiri. Mrs. Speaker, the roll call shows that 225 members responded to the call.
With 225 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, considering that the copies of Journal Number Eight dated August 8 and 9, 2023, were already distributed to the members, I move to dispense with the reading of the said journal, I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the aforementioned journal. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The journal... The reading of the said journal is dispensed with. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number Eight dated August 8 and 9, 2023. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve Journal Number Eight dated August 8 and 9, 2023. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as the communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business. Bills on First Reading. House Bill 8830. Establishing a special economic zone and free port in the area encompassing several barangays of Aglipay, Querino, creating for this purpose the authority of the port area of Querino by Representative Kuwa.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 8831. Requiring teaching of digital literacy as a part of the curriculum of grade schools and high schools by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8832.
House Bill 8832, Providing for the delineation of the Philippines' specific forest limits of the public domain by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 8833, Providing for the construction of water impoundings facilities for purposes of flood control, potable water sources, and irrigation in every city and municipality in the country by Representative Jaresco.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 8833, Granting free tuition for government employees enrolled in graduate education master's program at state universities and colleges by Representative Yamsuan.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8835, Establishing the National Police Clearance System by Representative Matugas.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8840, To Reform the Budget Process by enforcing greater accountability in public financial management, PFM, promoting fiscal sustainability, strengthening Congress power of the purse, instituting an integrated PFM system, and increasing budget transparency and participation by Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Irwin, and Yap Ed Vic.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 8842, Establishing Veterans Memorial Medical Centers in the Zone Visayas in Mindanao by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8843, Imposing stiffer penalties for child abuse, exploitation, and discrimination by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 8844, Amending RA10592, amending Articles 29, 94, 97, 98, and 99 of the Revised Penal Code by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 8845, Establishing the Benham Rise Research and Development Institute by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 8846, Declaring hazing as a heinous crime if as a consequence of the hazing death, rape, sodomy, or mutilation results thereof by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 8847, Requiring all national, regional, and provincial government hospitals to establish, operate, and maintain a dialysis ward or unit and providing free dialysis treatment to indigent patients by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8848, Institutionalizing Student Fair Discount by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 8849, Providing for the construction of public restrooms along national and provincial highways throughout the country by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 8850, Institutionalizing the granting of lateral promotion for honor graduates who choose to enter the military and uniformed service bureaus, agencies of the government by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security and the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8851, To strengthen, modernize, and professionalize the agricultural services of the local government units by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8852, Declare February 10 of every year as the National Anti-Hazing Day by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 8853, To restructure, rationalize, and integrate the government's livestock industry support agencies into the Philippine Livestock Authority, provide for a livestock development fund by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 8854, Reorganizing the Land Registration Authority, broadening its powers and functions, creating for the purpose the Office of Land Adjutor by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 8855, Institutionalizing development assistance and microfinance programs for livelihoods, establishing and promoting anti-poverty and inclusive growth policies which are supportive of micro, small, and medium enterprises, MSMEs, by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprise Development.
House Bill 8856, Recognizing the rights of natural ecosystems, populations, and processes, and providing mechanisms for the protection and enforcement thereof by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 8857, Creating the West Philippine Sea Authority by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and the Special Committee on West Philippine Sea.
House Bill 8858, Providing for an option for qualified elected officials to pay voluntary contribution to the GSIS to enable them to complete the minimum years of service by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 8859, Declaring August 14 of every year as the National Memorial Day for Comfort Women by Representatives Brosas, Castro Franz, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 8860, Amending Presidential Decree Number 1341, otherwise known as the Charter of the Politic University of the Philippines by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedemarie, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8861, Institutionalizing the Income Classification of Barangays, providing a barangay equalization fund by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedemarie, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8862, Allowing single-party consensual monitoring by law enforcement officers by Representatives Romualdes Yedemarie and Asidre.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety and the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 8863, To develop, protect, and promote the livestock poultry and dairy industries and their value chain to provide for a livestock poultry and dairy competitiveness enhancement fund by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedemarie, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 8864, Amending Republic Act Number 7305, otherwise known as the Baguio Carta of Public Health Workers by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedemarie, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8865, Institutionalizing the National Integrated Clearance System as a centralized digital facility for the public to request and secure clearances from national government agencies and local government units by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedemarie, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 8866, Regulating and Modernizing the Practice of Medical Technology in the Philippines. Repeating for this purpose RA Numbers 5527 and 6138 and PD Numbers 498 and 1534 by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedemarie, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
Resolutions. House Resolution 1180, Congratulating and Commending Lieutenant Colonel Francis L. Margaret Padilla Toborlupa for being awarded as the 2023 Cybersecurity Woman Leader of the Year by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Resolution 1181, Expressing profound congratulations and commendation to the Bago City Junior League Softball Team for their exceptional representation of the Philippines in the 2023 Junior League Softball World Series Championship held on July 30 to August 6, 2023 at Kirkland, Washington, USA by Representative Ferrer Juliet Marie.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1182, Congratulating Erwan Yusaf for winning the 2023 James Beard Broadcast Media Award by Representatives De Vanessa, Ko Angelica Natasha, Legarda Velozo Tuazon, Delmar Frasco, Barba, Benitez Nograles Margarita, Maceda Bolilia Velasco, Rama Konghun, Yap Chris Chantel, García Jose Arturo, Vargas Omentado, Robes Vergara, Mercado Revilla, Fernández Hernández, Zamora Amparo Maria, Gomark Ataidi, Alonte, Rodríguez Rufus, Villiarica Gómez, Singson Mihan, Singson Richel, Bautistalin, Kuwa Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Dzolo, Kimbo Salceda and Arenas.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution 1183, Congratulating Chefs Tim Flores and Gina Kwon of Filipino Restaurant Kasama for winning Best Chef at the James Beard Awards by Representatives De Vanessa, Ko Angelica Natasha, Legarda Velozo Tuazon, Delmar Frasco, Barba, Benitez Nograles Margarita, Maceda Bolilia Velasco, Rama Konghun, Yap Chris Chantel, García Jose Arturo, Vargas Omentado, Robes Vergara, Mercado Revilla, Fernández Hernández, Zamora Amparo Maria, Gomark Ataidi, Alonte, Rodríguez Rufus, Villiarica Gómez, Singson Mihan, Singson Richel, Bautistalin, Kuwa Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Dzolo, Kimbo Salceda and Arenas.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution 1184, Expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of Mr. Mario Lumawal by Representatives De Vanessa, Ko Angelica Natasha, Legarda Velozo Tuazon, Delmar Frasco, Barba Benitez Nograles Margarita, Maceda Bolilia Velasco, Rama Konghun, Yap Chris Chantel, García Jose Arturo, Vargas Omentado, Robes Vergara, Mercado Revilla, Fernández Hernández, Zamora Amparo Maria, Gomark Ataidi, Alonte, Rodríguez Rufus, Villiarica Gómez, Singson Mihan, Singson Richel, Bautistalin, Kuwa Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Dzolo, Kimbo Salceda and Arenas.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1185, Congratulating and commending the DNR Region 10 under the leadership of Regional Executive Director Henry A. Adornado for the successful raid on illegal mining operations last February to May 2023 along Ipunan River in the city of Tagayan de Oro and the municipality of Opal misamis Oriental by Representatives Suwan.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Resolution 1186, Congratulating and commending the DNR under the leadership of Secretary Maria Antonia Yulo Loyzada for the successful raid on illegal mining operations last February to May 2023 along Ipunan River in the city of Tagayan de Oro and the municipality of Opal misamis Oriental by Representatives Suwan.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Resolution 1187, Congratulating and commending the Mines and Geosciences Bureau Region 10 under the leadership of Regional Director Felizardo A. Gacan Jr. for the successful raid on illegal mining operations last February to May 2023 along Ipunan River in the city of Tagayan de Oro and the municipality of Opal misamis Oriental by Representatives Suwan.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Resolution 1188, Congratulating and commending the NBI Northeastern Mindanao Regional Officer Office under the leadership of Regional Director Patricio S. Bernardes Jr. for the successful raid on illegal mining operations last February to May 2023 along Ipunan River in the city of Tagayan de Oro and the municipality of Opal misamis Oriental by Representatives Suwan.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Resolution 1189, Congratulating and commending the Philippine Army 4th Infantry Division under the leadership of Major General Jose Maria Cuervo II for the successful raid on illegal mining operations last February to May 2023 along Ipunan River in the city of Tagayan de Oro and the municipality of Opal misamis Oriental by Representatives Suwan.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Resolution 1190, Urging the House of Representatives to allocate 6,890,000 for fiscal year 2024 for the establishment of a permanent office building of the Department of Tourism, DOT, Karaga Satellite Office in Shargao Island by Representative Matugas.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Resolution 1191, Congratulating and commending the Filipino choral group Camer Core Manila for winning the 2023 Group Choir of the World title at the Langgolan International Musical Isted Fod held in Wales United Kingdom on July 8, 2023 by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, González Aurelio, Dalipe Libanan, Marcos Romualdes Yedemarie, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message for the Senate. Message dated August 9, 2023, informing the House of Representatives that on August 8, 2023, the Senate designated the Senators Joseph Victor G. Herseto, Wing Gachalian, I.M.R. Marcos, Ronald Batao de la Rosa, and Aquilino Oka Pimentel III as Conferees to the Kamal Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill Number 2165 and House Bill Number 7006 on the automatic income classification of provinces, cities, and municipalities. Communications. Letter dated June 30, 2023 of the Kuwa OIC Audit Team Leader,
Martínez and Josenia Angelia Ali Martínez.
To the guests of Congresswoman Baidimpol Mastura, welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business of the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8505 as contained in Subcommittee Number... Sorry, Mr. Speaker. The House Bill Number 8505 as contained in Committee Number Report 675. I request therefore that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill out of prejudice to the insertion into the records of the text therefore off. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8505.
House Bill 8505, an act strengthening the Basis Conversion and Development Authority, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 227, otherwise known as the Basis Conversion and Development Act of 1992 as amended.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Basis and Conversion be recognized to begin the sponsorship measure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The sponsor of the committee is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, colleagues, it is truly a privilege that I stand before you today to advocate for an essential legislative measure that holds the potential to shape the course of our nation's progress and development. House Bill 8505, which is a substitute bill for the measures filed by former President, Deputy Speaker Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, and Senior Deputy Speaker Dong Gonzalez, aims to fortify and extend the capabilities of the Basis Conversion and Development Authority. House Bill 8505 embodies a vision that transcends mere infrastructure and investment. It embodies a vision of a stronger, more secure, and prosperous future for the country. If we may recall, Mr. Speaker, the BCDA, a creation born from Republic Act Number 7227, stands as a testament to our commitment to repurpose former military bases into dynamic centers of economic vitality and social advancement. Over the past three decades, the BCDA has transformed former military installations into thriving economic hubs, such as the renowned Bonifacio Global City, Newport City, McKinley Hill, to name a few. Moreover, its remarkable achievements are not confined solely to urban development, but extend to vital infrastructure projects, exemplified by the Subic-Clark-Tarlak Expressway, which has substantially enhanced connectivity in central Luzon. The substitute bill is an affirmation of BCDA's indispensable role as a catalyst for both national security and economic prosperity. It underscores BCDA's dedication to ensuring a robust Armed Forces of the Philippines by enabling continued funding support from the revenues generated within the Clark Freeport Zone. Our commitment to strengthening the military's capabilities irrevocably linked to our commitment to fostering enduring economic growth, a balance that is imperative for our nation's holistic development. Thus, the need to extend the corporate life of BCDA to another 50 years and renewable for the same period thereafter. BCDA's bold strides extend beyond economic zones. They encompass the creation of a smarter, greener future. The monumental New Clark City project exemplifies BCDA's dedication to establishing a pioneering smart city, a beacon of sustainable innovation. Moreover, this bill recognizes the necessity to liberate residential development within BCDA economic zones, ensuring the expansion of residential options for our citizens, alleviating the pressures on the national capital region, and driving equitable progress across our nation. To sustain its gains, it is proposed to increase the authorized capital of the BCDA to 400 billion from 100 billion either in cash or in property. In pursuit of a stronger, more secure, and prosperous Philippines, I ask you, my dear colleagues, to rally behind this bill. Let us together build better, more, para sa ating pong bagong Pilipinas. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, and my dear colleagues.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from the Second District of Pampanga to deliver her sponsorship speech. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The lady from Pampanga, former President Deputy Speaker Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, is recognized for her sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I identify with everything that our very brilliant Chairman Ino D said. And in co-sponsoring the committee report that he made out of our various bills, I would like to just add the special reason why I filed a bill in order to amend the BCDA law. Mr. President, and Mr. Speaker, in my experience, Clark is really a very attractive investment area. One of the few disadvantages of Clark is that it is expensive as far as housing is concerned, because you cannot buy land. So, everybody has to rent, and the rent becomes very expensive, because even the developer cannot buy the land. Therefore, in order to address that problem, in my version of the bill that I filed, a very important feature is that we are providing for the conversion of residential lands. In other words, in the residential lands identified for the development plan of the economic zones, especially for Clark, they can be declared alienable and disposable because of this bill of ours. And so, in order to provide for that very reasonable requirement, I hope that we can pass this bill. I just end with an anecdote about my own constituents in Guagua, Pampanga. Many of them work in Clark, but they really have a hard time commuting between Guagua and Clark. And sometimes they feel that their salary goes to the transportation between Guagua and Clark. But this way, more investors can build housing in Clark, and therefore, more of the workers from all over Pampanga, all over Tarlac, all over Nueva Ecija, all over Bulacan, and maybe even from Metro Manila will be able to find it easier to work in Clark, and therefore, can help to develop more and more the progress of Clark and its surrounding areas. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, having no member wishing to interpolate, I now close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we now proceed to consider individual amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Gentleman from Taguig, Honorable Member Ricardo Cruz for his individual amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The Honorable Gentleman Cruz is recognized for his individual amendment.
Mr. Speaker, on Section 2, Page 2 of the measure, insert the phrase by the Conversion Authority. After the word funded on the proposed amendments to Section 6 of this act, to read as follows. Section 6, Capitalization, the Conversion Authority shall have an authorized capital of 400 billion pesos, which may be fully subscribed by the Republic of the Philippines and funded by the Conversion Authority either in cash or property.
What does the sponsor say?
I accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
We join the majority in accepting the amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The proposed amendment is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Gentleman from Isabela, Honorable Member, House Member Faustino Michael D for his individual amendments.
The Honorable Representative D is recognized for his individual amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would like to inquire if the distinguished Chairperson of the Special Committee on Basis Conversion, my cousin, from the Sixth District of Isabela, Faustino Ino A.D., would yield some amendments on Republic Act 7227, otherwise known as the Basis Conversion and Development Act of 1992 as amendment.
Of course, Mr. Speaker.
Great. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, a new paragraph under Section 5 of RA 7227 as amendment shall be inserted to read as follows. Section 5, Powers of Conversion Authority, to carry out its objectives under its act, the Conversion Authority is hereby vested with the following powers. Letter L, to grant, donate, or otherwise alienate or gratitude, title real property to any government institution or agency to be devoted exclusively for public use. Hence, Section 5, Paragraph L of Republic Act 7227 as amendment is hereby replaced and dominated as Paragraph M and all succeeding paragraphs of the same section are hereby enumerated in accordance with their alphabetical orders. Furthermore, this amendment shall be inserted as Section 2 of House Bill 8505, and the subsequent section shall likewise be numbered, renumbered accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. What does the sponsor say?
This representation gladly accepts the proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, we accept all the amendments. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The proposed amendment is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The period of amendments is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8505.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 8505 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 8505 is hereby approved on second reading as amended. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I ask that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Danilo Dan Fernandez, namely, Special Assistant to the President of Turkey, Mr. İbrahim Ugurlu, City Councilor Erwin Kakirsoy, Selkuk Sehun Samur, and Alper Akbas. Mr. Speaker.
Yes, to the guests of Honorable Congressman Danilo Dan Fernandez, welcome to the House of Representatives. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I ask that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores, namely, Dr. Helen Ocampo, Ms. Yolanda Bernardino, Mr. Anthony Mendoza, and Mr. Glenn Bernardino.
To the guests of the Honorable Gentleman Jonathan Keith Flores, please stand up to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I ask that we recognize the guests of the Deputy Majority Leader Erwin Tulfo, namely, Mr. Bobby and Mrs. Wanda Theo.
To the guests of the Honorable Gentleman, Deputy Majority Leader Erwin Tulfo, Mr. Bobby Theo and Wanda Theo, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we begin consideration of House Bill 8503 as contained in Committee Report 673, submitted by the Committee on Natural Resources. And for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8503.
House Bill 8503, an act declaring the month of June of every year as the Marine Turtle Conservation and Protection Month.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the sponsor of the measure, the Honorable Mujib Hataman of the Lone District of Basilan, to begin his sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The Honorable Hataman is recognized to begin his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Mr. Speaker, in the interest of time, I move that we adopt the explanatory note of House Bill 8503 as the sponsorship speech of the said measure. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Is there any objection to the motion of the sponsor? Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we now proceed to consider individual amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Mark Go of the Lone District of Baguio City for his individual amendment.
The Honorable Mark Go is recognized for his individual amendments.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished sponsor, I would like to introduce an individual amendment on Section 6 of House Bill 8503 to replace the word "consistent" with the word "inconsistent." The said section now shall read as follows. Section 6 repealing clause, all laws, ordinances, orders, rules, regulations, and other issuances or parts thereof which are inconsistent with this act are hereby repealed, amended, or modified accordingly.
What does the sponsor say?
I accept the proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. What does the House say?
I move to accept the said amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The proposed individual amendment is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The period of amendments is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill 8503, as amended.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 8503 on second reading as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 8503 is hereby approved on second reading as amended. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I request that we acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Stella Luskimbo, a group of exceptional young individuals and their parents from Marikina.
To the guests of our Honorable Stella Luskimbo, welcome to the House of Representatives. Please stand up to be recognized. Let's give them a round of applause, please. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House resolutions to appropriate committees. First, House Resolution Number 1149 to the Committee on Transportation. Second, House Resolution Number 1150 to the Committee on Revision of Laws. Third, House Resolution Number 1151 to the Committee on Public Works and Highways. Fourth, House Resolution Number 1152 to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries. Fifth, House Resolution Number 1155 to the Committee on Public Works and Highways. Sixth, House Resolution Number 1157 to the Committee on Energy. Seventh, House Resolution Number 1159 to the Committee on Transportation. Eighth, House Resolution Number 1161 to the Committee on Public Works and Highways. Two, sorry. House Resolution Number 1159 to the Committee on Transportation. Eighth, House Resolution Number 1161 to the Committee on Public Works and Highways. Ninth, House Resolution Number 1162 to the Ad Hoc Committee on Marawi Rehabilitation and Victims Compensation. Tenth, House Resolution Number 1163 to the Committee on Energy. Eleventh, House Resolution Number 1165 to the Committee on Transportation. Twelfth, House Resolution Number 1168 to the Committee on Energy.
There is a motion to refer the aforementioned House resolutions to the appropriate committees. Are there any objections? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in suitor to the rules of governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move to refer the following speeches to the appropriate committees. The speech of Representative Balindog and Representative Anjong, both delivered in the 31st of July to the Committee of Public Accounts. The speech of Representative Vergara to the Committee of Agriculture and Food. Representative Herrera to the Committee of Transportation. Representative Castro to the Committee of Basic Education and Culture. Representative Bosita to the Committee of Justice. Representative D to the Committee of Energy. Representative Tulfo to the Committee of National Defense and Security. All delivered on the 8th of August of 2023. Lastly, Representative Chato to the Committee of Banks, Finance, and Intermediaries, delivered on August 9, 2023. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to refer the aforementioned speeches to the appropriate committees. Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Number 7938 from the Committee on Public Order and Safety to the Committee on Justice. And House Resolution Number 1088 from the Committee on Social Services to the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The motion of the Majority Leader is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for a few-minute suspension.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I ask that we adjourn session until tomorrow, August 16, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Session is adjourned until tomorrow, August 16, at 3 p.m.